Hello and welcome again to another Board of Education Meeting Recap, this time for the month of March 2020. I'm joined here by Superintendent Mary Elizabeth Davis.
Thanks for having me.
We're glad to have you, and I'm J.D. Harden, Executive Director, Communications and Public Relations for the school district. And we are proud to come to you once again to share with you all the wonderful action that took place during our monthly board meeting. There was a lot of information that was shared this month. And, you know, as always, we do a lot of work. The board does a lot of work during this time. And we'll kick things off in that study session. And they jumped right into a very important aspect or component for any Board of Education, and that's talking about budget development.
That's right.
And we're already on FY '21.
That's right. This is our season for developing the FY '21 budget. That fiscal year, of course, starts on July 1st of 2020. And in this discussion, we really had the opportunity to explore what is our projected revenue, what are some projected expenditures as we begin to take form for a tentative budget here in April. The Board of Education had some conversation around their commitment to competitive compensation salaries for all job families, commitment to honoring the Step salary schedule this coming budget year, and also just the opportunity to really invest in fine arts at our middle and high school levels, in our athletic programs at the high school, and to really try to hone in on class size at all levels, particularly in elementary school allocations. Five additional counselors, five additional SROs were discussed, and really the opportunity to explore how could compensation for Henry County Schools employees begin to take shape as we project our revenue from the state of Georgia. So still very preliminary, but lots of good discussion where the opportunity to start making some important decisions began to reveal itself.
And of course, those discussions started with some of the information that we gleaned from our community.
That's right.
Last month, when they were able to come in and give some thoughts around, you know, the budget development process and things that they would like to see, you know, our financial picture allocated toward.
That's right.
And so we were glad to be able to, you know, lend their or add their voices to that conversation. Now, moving right along, something that's consumed a lot of our time, a lot of our energy, but for a good reason, is our strategic plan. And that development process has been routinely updated by Chief of Staff Dr. Carl Nolton. And this month, we're kind of moving right along into this next phase, if you will.
That's right.
And you had the opportunity to kind of share some of the feedback that we've gained from our community through this whole process.
Yeah, it's really been exceptional, and our board is incredibly energized around this process to engage a community that we have embarked upon. And so thanks to you for also being a part of this great community conversation where we're talking about our hopes, dreams, and desires for the future of Henry County Schools from 2020 to '25. Now, we actually interacted with nearly 8,000 different stakeholders over the last several months and actually pulled together all of the data that had been captured from those various groups and schools and school councils and faculties and community conversations. Those are all available now on our website for your review. And a team has synthesized all of that data collected in order to produce what we will refer to as the first draft of the 2020-25 strategic plan. I'm pretty sure we can take a listen to that first draft.
To continue this report, I can't help but share just how proud and unified we have all come as a community around these basic questions that will drive the future of this great school system. What you see on the screen is from a team of administrative assistants taking note of every word, phrase, thought, concern, opportunity shared, and putting it into documents, now all available for your view, so you can see how a collection of community voice can be captured. And then how do you take a team through a process of studying all of those words and allowing the unique weighting that we facilitated at each session to bring to the surface the results? And how, in that whiteboard session you see is the middle screen was a lot sloppier until the eraser got it really cleaned up, and then saying, how do we get that into a pencil version, which our board had the chance to view last week, to now a printed document? And I'm actually going to take a moment and read this printed document as a way of our first public introduction of what we will call the first draft of our strategic plan outline. So if you will bear with me, I believe there will be each section on the screen. Our strategic plan outline for 2020-25 is our first draft, a draft that we will welcome continued feedback around in the coming weeks, but it begins with Henry County Schools' core beliefs. Therefore, there are common understandings that will continue to drive the core business of teaching and learning in Henry County Schools. Understanding number one, we will preserve and promote an aligned system of teaching and learning that includes clearly articulated standards, common pacing, aligned resources, and internal formative assessments to validate learning. Understanding number two, we will hold ourselves accountable to the metrics determined by the state of Georgia, including on-grade level and above performance by content area for all student groups. And understanding number three, we will embrace a culture of continuous improvement that involves stakeholders in the process of getting better as a system of schools, as an employer of choice, and as a lever for strength in the community. However, to look into the future, into 2020 to '25, priority student outcomes emerge through the conversations of more than 7,000 stakeholders over the last five months. And therefore, to advance the district's ambitious pursuit to become a high-performing school district and community, we must strive to additionally hold ourselves accountable to metrics that advance opportunities, access, and outcomes for every student group in the following ways. Priority outcome one, Henry County Schools will advance opportunities, access, and outcomes for every student group in literacy proficiency at every grade. Priority outcome two is that Henry County Schools will advance opportunities, access, and outcomes for every student group in readiness to learn at every level. And priority outcome number three, Henry County Schools will advance opportunities, access, and outcomes for every student group in college career and life-ready skills post-graduation. To take action, the strategic plan outline includes strategic actions to guide the future work. And therefore, to advance the district's ambitious pursuit and achieve metrics that strive to increase opportunities, access, and outcomes for every student group, we propose the following strategic actions. Strategic action number one, advance pre-K through 12 learning opportunities and experiences. Strategic action number two, advance effective school leadership and classroom instruction. Strategic action number three, advance connectivity to value and engage all students, employees, families, and partners in our growing community. Strategic action number four, advance student and employee health, wellness, and support structures. And strategic action number five, advance a high-performing operational culture. The work to design a first draft of priority student outcomes and strategic actions would not have been possible without the voices of more than 7,000 of our stakeholders around this community, without a dedicated team of professionals who was committed to synthesizing the language provided by our community, and of course, the amazing strategic partner that we have in Greenway Strategy and Patty Fogelstein. This is our first read of our first draft of the strategic plan outline, which is now subject to your reaction. What did we get right? What did we get wrong? What doesn't make sense? And what is missing? Those four questions, along with this first draft, will now be placed on our website for any community member or stakeholder to electronically respond. Additionally, we will visit 12 neighborhoods in the next three weeks and sit around different living room tables and coffee tables and have neighborhood conversations about what are the, what is the reaction our community has to the words that landed on a piece of paper after synthesizing nearly 8,000 voices. And then we will have a student group tour, where we will meet with 12 different student groups representing every level and have student group reaction to the words that landed on this first outline. I also think it's important to note that if you're looking for the specific initiative, you're not going to see it yet. That is what happens once we have committed to these strategic actions and these priority student outcomes. That will be the body of work that happens next. So I think if we go to the next slide, I think it's important that we conclude this conversation first and foremost, expressing our deep appreciation for the level of engagement our community has had around believing in what is best for kids in Henry County Schools and for a future of a great system of schools. But this is not new. We have been consistent in wanting to engage community voice for continuous improvement. Every, from April of 2018, with our initial entry phase analysis to a status report that reported to the public our progress, to now turning around and thinking about building our future together. It has really been a journey and one in which the future of our organization is simply so bright.
This is phenomenal work, and thank you, Dr. Davis. This is a first that I'm aware of, that this kind of work has been done in this county. So I'm so excited for, about the work. These rounds of community conversation has been so powerful, because I've attended several of them, and the community has been so excited to have a voice. So it's so important for us to keep this going with the community, keep this dialogue going with the community, because they, they feel a part of this system now, because they've had a voice. And to say that there've been about 4,000 people that have had a voice, or 7,000, I can't, I heard two numbers. I just think it's just phenomenal for the doors to have been open for the community to come in and dialogue with us, to have a voice in what we're doing, so they can better understand the work of the board, and I think they can appreciate it. And my question to you again, when does our work start? Thank you.
Thank you for that information, Dr. Nolton, and I appreciate the video that was put together that's going to be sent out to the community and the stakeholders. But I personally wanted to also express my gratitude for all the hard work that went into putting all of this together, and the staff members who were actually responsible for looking at the charts and typing all that information, God bless them. Like, I'm so appreciative for all of that hard work. And I also want to express my gratitude to the community, because we do value the community input, and I wanted to personally say I thank you for the community's input. And we're looking forward, as Dr. Davis said, to continuing that, because we do represent our community, and we take that very seriously. So thank you, and I'm excited about the future.
This is so exciting to me. I can so vividly remember sitting around tables with all of you and brainstorming and dreaming and asking Dr. Davis if we could have it done yesterday. Yeah, we gave her a six-week deadline at first, but to see it go from that conversation to all of those Post-it notes and the tired wrists of all of the admin assistants, thank you for that thankless work that you did to put this all together and get it organized. And then to see it in this draft form is just really, really exciting. And I hope that the community sees how seriously we take that core, core commitment, number two, that we truly believe in the voice of our community, and it is critical to our success as a school system. And we're not talking about a small community, we're talking about 43,000 students. So I'm grateful to each and every one of the community members and teachers and faculty members and everyone who played a part in this, and I look forward to the next phase and continued involvement. Thank you.
And I am glad to reflect that it was June of 2019 that this board sat down and designed the process that we would embrace, and we have embraced that process. And we have truly followed the lead, the expectations established by this board, who is now prepared to take this strategic plan outline into the next five years.
As you can see there, a lot of great work has taken place, and we're moving into that next phase now, where we're going to take, you know, this first draft, share it with our community in little pockets all across the county, and get more feedback, more reaction to see if we were able to nail everything that they shared with us when we first visited with them.
That's right. So whether you visit our website and provide some reaction and validation, or some missed opportunities that you'd like to point out, or we are in a neighborhood near you, we look forward to continuing this dialogue, because as we've said, continuous improvement in Henry County Schools requires continuous community engagement.
We're so close, so stay tuned. That strategic plan is getting closer and closer to being fully finished, and we're ready to be able to share that with you and guide our district for the next five years.
That's right.
So moving along from there, we oftentimes, for, you know, kind of forget about this, but we're trying to plan for two and three years out. And so that next process is the development of our calendars that are important to set the instructional learning days, and of course, all of our workdays for our employees. So Dr. Carl Nolton was able to share with the community two drafts, two proposed calendars for the 2021/22 school year and the 2022/23 school year.
That's right.
You can find those on our website, and take a look at those. And there's really some, you know, unique things that we've added to that, like teacher workdays.
Yes, this opportunity to really say, teachers do need time. We heard that through the strategic planning process, and the board wanting to actually carve out days that would be interruption-free for teachers to be about the business of their work in what we'll call teacher workdays on that calendar now.
And to those who have been so familiar with our calendars in recent years, we are able to keep all the breaks in these proposed calendars. We start kind of a midway, mid-week start each August, and then we conclude each school year for our students on the Friday of the, you know, the Memorial Day weekend.
That's right.
So take a look at those, give us your feedback, and the board will take action in their next meeting on those particular calendars.
That's right.
So we also had the chance to hear from, of course, our Chief Learning and Performance Officer, Melissa Morse, on a new policy that, you know, really centers around promotion and retention.
That's right. So our Board of Education has taken real seriously the role of reform policies in their policymaking work, and reform policies are really intended to stabilize an organization, but also really breathe into the future some standards for operational practices, so that there's consistency from classroom to classroom and school to school, and this promotion and retention policy is no different. There is a unified commitment on that Board of Education to clarify our promotion and retention practices through a standardized policy, so that there is a reliable system in place at each school and each grade level. There was an emphasis from the Board of Education when they convened in September in a, in a whole-board training session, where they studied policies around the country and really thought about the values that were so close to home for them, which was increased communication to families on a regular basis, as well as a consistent process from school to school. That has now come about into a policy. It is out for public review, and we welcome your reaction and response to that reform policy that is really the original work and thinking of our Board of Education.
Of course, our board members had a little bit to say about that. Let's take a listen.
Mr. Chair members of the board, I'd like to invite Ms. Morse to the podium to present informational item C6, Policy IHE Promotion and Retention. Ms. Morse?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair members of the board, Madam Superintendent. This afternoon, I am pleased to share an update on revisions made at your direction on Reform Policy IHE Promotion and Retention. The way our board gives action to these core beliefs and commitments is through reform policies. Reform policies are your way to make clear what you value and the action you expect the district to take on district business. At your whole-board training in September, which just seems like yesterday, it's hard to believe that was September, you dug deeply into three areas of consideration for new reform policies. Digital citizenship, talking all around the idea of how we use technology in our classrooms, all things graduation, and then the focus of our time today, promotion and retention of students. We are ready, however, today to share our reform policy review around establishing criteria for promotion and retention for our students in the Henry County Schools. After consolidating the feedback and reviewing it for themes and commonalities aligned again to your core beliefs and commitments, and at the direction that you gave us at the September board training, we drafted some possible language that was provided to you for review. In that policy that's excerpted here, you can see a proposed language for the revised reform policy IHA that we would put forth for the public to review, with then the potential for board adoption in April, that would allow this to go into effect for the 2020-21 school year. The unified governance of this board to reform policy is how Henry County Schools will sustain growth in student achievement and successful outcomes for students.
Thank you so much for that information, and I really appreciate how teachers have been included in this process to help decide whether a student should be retained or promoted, because they're the ones who are with the student all day, every day. And so I did have some teachers express concern about potentially not being involved in the process. I'm glad to see that that is being considered. So thank you for all the work that's gone into this.
Thank you for the information, and I'm excited about all of this, because it's, that says to me, a parent would not be told, May 1, that your child would not be moving on to the next grade or the next level. So the consistency in the county means a lot, and it speaks volumes for this board to, to see all of this in, in progress that's going to take place, because it's nothing like being told at the, at the last minute that your child has not, would not be moving on to the next level, because he did not achieve his, do any, make any progress in that particular grade level. So thank you so much.
I agree with Ms. Edwards. See, you don't want to wait to the very last minute and spring, hey, guess what, you're, you're going to be with me again next year. But it's nice to have several, several different departments supporting your decision, and this is not just the decision of one teacher, it's a cumulative decision of all parties involved. And, and there's, there's nothing wrong with being held back. Some people just don't grasp it the first time, and a little bit more time to develop your skills.
Yes, thank you for this. The things that really speak to me here are the early and often communication. I think that that's so important for families to know early and to, to be in constant communication with the teacher and with administrators about progress for a student. And I will say that I think our new report card does an excellent job at communicating clearly to parents, so that they understand what the student is learning and how they are performing from the very beginning. So I'm so grateful again to the hard work that was done last year on the report cards, and I think that this will, it'll really help in this policy as well. Thank you.
Speaking of policies, of course, we're deep in the throes of our comprehensive policy review, being conducted with the assistance of the Georgia School Boards Association, where they're taking a look at every single policy that we've got for Henry County Schools, which again is one of the main responsibilities of the board, in addition to, you know, the superintendent oversight, budget development, and of course, policy setting. And, you know, we're in the fifth set now of, you know, policies to be reviewed, and with each set comes a, a set of recommendations that would either tell us to, you know, that we should keep a policy that we currently have, or we could tweak it a little bit, or we could do away with it.
That's right.
And that's what, you know, our Chief of Staff, Dr. Nolton, was able to provide the board with, that update. We have three more to go, so, and then we'll be done, and we'll be able to put that, you know, behind us. But right now, the work is, has really been instrumental in helping us clean up a lot of the policies that we have to better govern our school system. So moving out of there, we had a lot of business items, and of course, they were all taking action on during the meeting later on that night. But let's talk about what really kicked off the business meeting, and that was inspiration. We love inspiration.
It's unbelievable.
We have some of the most inspiring students and staff members anyone could ever ask for in a school district, and of course, we had Dutch Town Middle Schools talent on display. We had a young singer with us.
That's right. It was an emotional response from the audience as a young musician sang so beautifully to kick off and keep our business meeting with students at center stage. It was, it was remarkable. And we actually followed that by taking a moment to celebrate our Board of Education. Across the state of Georgia, the Georgia School Boards Association and the governor have declared the third week in March to be Board Member Appreciation Week. And of course, that's just, in this month, the opportunity to celebrate our very unified governance team, our Board of Education members, and we were able to do that during our inspiration.
March 16th to the 20th is the date for that. So we're, we're always pleased to recognize our board members, and they've done a tremendous amount of work on behalf of the employees, and of course, the students, the staff, the families, all across this district, to really position our, our school system in, in a way that we can all be proud of. And so we're glad to take the, the moment that we did to be able to celebrate them. But we also had a huge audience for the March meeting. It was packed, because we had a lot of awards and recognitions to go through. We had a, actually a coach, who is the track coach of the year, George Phillips from Eagles Landing High School, he was there. We also had two young, a very unique situation, two young wrestlers, brother and sister, actually, who were both state champions in their respective weight classes this year for the state of Georgia.
Yeah, we're thinking that might be unprecedented.
Really phenomenal story, so congratulations to the Jones household on their, their grand accomplishment. We also had our Science and Engineering Fair for our middle and high school students, but we also had elementary school students who were able to compete this year in their own respective competition. A lot of students recognized there.
That's right.
And then we had Literacy Days that were featured, and then we also were able to give, you know, grand recognition to our star students and their teachers for their accomplishment, as they were the highest SAT scores in their respective schools. And we actually had one from Union Grove High School, who will now go on to compete at the regional level for the state star student competition. So a lot of recognitions there. But about the business that we had that night, we did have the board take action on nominating and selecting a GSBA delegate to the state conference. Congratulations, Mrs. Annette Edwards, on that recognition by your peers and being able to move forward. But we also had a formative assessment system that was brought up, I believe.
That's right. So the board took action to approve the purchase of additional items for the formative assessment system that is a part of our aligned system of teaching and learning called for in the Plan of Action. And so that action went smoothly, and the board's commitment to validating that learning is happening in our schools really was a part of that discussion.
Fantastic. We also had a network system upgrade that, or Dr. Brian Blanton from our Information Division was able to present, you know, riveting stuff here with the sewer, sewer line easement out in one of our pieces of property out in the Ola area. And then, of course, one of the biggest things that our Facilities and Maintenance Group is really responsible for is a five-year facilities plan, and I believe we received some favorable feedback on that.
That's right. Every five years, the state of Georgia requires school districts to do a local five-year facilities plan, and you're then actually audited by an external group of officials around the state. And we recently underwent that process and actually received tremendous commendations. Our Board of Education was credited for an incredible building program and really got a lot of credit for the prototype model of our school building process. And really, what this plan does is it sets out the course for the type of state money we would be eligible to apply for, to prepare for future growth. So it was a great moment to celebrate some past and strong facilities and building program work, but also to begin realizing that there will be state funds available for future projects.
And in addition to the School Board Appreciation Week that also takes place in the month of March, we had some other recognitions that we were able to celebrate.
Yeah, we celebrated our social workers with Social Worker Appreciation Week, and of course, it was School Breakfast Appreciation Week, and we're so thankful for our Food and Nutrition employees, as well as the leadership of Cantrell Brown, our Executive Director of Food and Nutrition Services. And we also had the opportunity to recognize that it is Arts in Schools Month, and we have great arts and programming at our elementary, middle, and high schools, both academically, extracurricularly, and we're proud of our fine arts educators and our students who show so much talent in that field. And then this month, the month of March, will be our Special Olympics, and we love celebrating our student athletes and cheering them on from the sideline as we have those exciting events on the horizon.
Of course, we also had the opportunity, as we like to do, is feature our new employees, or maybe even some, some transfers to higher leadership roles, and we had, we had some that were recognized, of course, during the board meeting.
That's right. There, during the board meeting, we were able to celebrate the appointment of Carrie Edwards, our new Director of Personalized Learning and Innovative Practice.
And, you know, wrapping things up, you know, there was something that we did talk about at the very first of the meetings, during both meetings, actually, because it's on the minds of you at home, and of course, people all around this country and this world right now, and that's the issue of the coronavirus. We know that it's a very, you know, sensitive topic for, for many families, and of course, you know, as a school system, we have a responsibility to you to, to keep you as informed as possible, and that's why we have taken time and dedicated to a lot of time and energy and resources to keeping you as up-to-date as possible through routine communication, the development of a webpage on our website. It is, you know, easy to access through our homepage, but for those of you at home, it's, the web address is www.bit.ly/hcscoronavirusinfo. There you can find all the latest information and updates, as we keep that regularly maintained. But we also want you to know that we're not doing this in isolation. We are working with some great partnerships that exist all throughout this county.
Yes, I mean, our partnership with the Department of Public Health and our emergency management team with the Henry County government is second to none. Not only is it longstanding and stable, but it is incredibly proactive, and we are in daily and constant, around-the-clock communication with those two authorizing bodies, and we are working in synchronization in order to prevent the spread of the coronavirus, as well- well as prepare a response, should that be necessary.
As is the case every day, and most definitely in times like these, we do appreciate your trust and faith and that you put in our school system, and we don't take that lightly. And we just want you to know that our commitment to you is to keep you as informed and up-to-date as possible to ensure the safest learning environment for all of our students and families and employees. As always, thank you once again for joining us here for another monthly Board Meeting Recap. Joined here with Superintendent Mary Elizabeth Davis, and I'm J.D. Harden, and we'll see you next time. As is the case with most board meetings, there's a lot more information that you're able to witness being there in person or watching the full version on demand that we're unable to bring to you here in this very short Board Meeting Recap. The links to those presentations and videos can be found in the description section directly below this video.